Ashley, you had good weather.
Yeah.
And it ended up being another good weather.
The water is warm. And my kids are finally like swimming.
Yeah.
You know how it sounds? We were at the ocean. I can't swim in the water. Like literally, I was probably four years. I was exhausted.
Yeah.
And I was like, oh my god, it's a good day.
It's an exercise.
Yeah, it is. It's really good. Yeah, that was crazy. It's like getting pressure.
Coming up and laughing about it.
Yeah.
What beach did you?
Ocean City, New Jersey.
Where? New Jersey?
New Jersey, yeah.
Well, there's like beaches they go to, and they don't see. You don't go from one town to the next. You know, seriously, I would. I just feel like there's so much that you can do with this. It's just so convenient.
Yeah.
Yeah, with the boardwalk. Yeah.
Sure, if you get skate.
Yeah, that's fun. We looked at that, we were gonna do that. Yeah, we did.
We did that.
They want to skate.
Yeah, for our summer.
Did you?
Yeah.
I didn't have a chance.
Some are hard.
We did it before we went. Before we went. That was the first thing.
We think we do as well for that one.
Our son's very fun. I went for my birthday birthday.
Are you ready? Start again?
Yes, I did. Just checking up. All of them all seems to be. It's okay now.
Hey, Henry.
Hi, Henry. Very good. Well, welcome everyone to the West Goshen Township Board of Supervisors meeting for Thursday, July the 6th. Will you please stand and join me in the fledgeable digits?
I'm the fledgeman, Mr. President of United States of America. I'm the chair of the public for which he stands, one nation, one mayor, indivisible, and the creation of citizens overall.
Thank you. Please be aware this meeting is being livestreamed on the Township YouTube channel, and the meeting may also be audio or video recorded by people present in the room. First item of business is the opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone attending who would like to raise an issue that is not on the agenda tonight, or has a question or comment for the staff or the board? Very good. We'll move on to the next item of business, which is discussion regarding the West Goshen Township Park and Recreation Department's Summer Recreation Program. So Chris, I'll kick this one off, and then you can chime in, please do. So the board received an email request for consideration of the fees paid by nonresidents of the township, but who have a child that attends a school in West Goshen. This has to do with the fact that we have a differential fee between residents of West Goshen who have children attending the summer camp, and for the nonresidents, it's a more expensive fee. The question was, is that appropriate and is it equitable, given that some people may find additional cost a burden to have their kid attend the same camp as their school friends? So that's really the genesis of the question. Chris, do you want to just walk us through some of the background information that we asked you to provide?
Hi, yes, Mr. Chairman. So we were, myself, Ken Lear, and Tom Steinsen, the Park and Recreation Department, were asked to provide information for the board's consideration related to total revenue received from participants separated by resident versus nonresident, the total cost of running the camps, and subsidy by the township, and of the nonresident children attending, do we know how many go to a school in West Goshen Township? Just to address the last question out front, we do not have that information. We don't collect that data. The only way to really evaluate that would be to take the registration forms and compare that to the school district map. But I would admit, I believe we have three elementary schools from the school district in our jurisdictions, what we figured, Ken?
In West Goshen Township itself, yes.
Yes.
And in terms of schools that service West Goshen, it's, I think, all of the two.
Yes, that's correct. I think the only two are probably East Goshen Elementary and East Bradford Elementary.
Or not, Bayersy House.
Edwood, Bayersy House.
Actually, no, there are some residents who might be.
So in terms of the expenditures of running the camp, we looked at the 2022 costs since those have been completed, and that cost was approximately $106,000. The total fee revenue that was received was approximately $65,500. So the township does subsidize the program approximately 40%, which is meeting the goal of subsidizing the cost approximately 50%. So we're a little bit ahead of where our goal is in terms of the fee structure. The fee structure currently is $200 for the first child, $150 for the second child, and $100 for the third child for residents. For nonresidents, it's a flat fee of $300 per child, which is roughly 50% increase over the fee for residents. And this covers the entire EWE program. For comparison, we did look at East Goshen Township, and they're charged $110 per week for residents and $120 per week for nonresidents, which equates to, for a similar EWE program, would be $880 for residents and $960 for nonresidents. My point there is that the fee structure that the township currently administers is very cost-effective. Yes. So there are 320 children participating in the Township's 2023 camp program, and this breaks down to 272 resident children and 48 nonresident children, so they're approximately 15%. The revenue breakdown for resident children was $50,650 and $14,400 for nonresident children. And then in terms of breaking down how those fees were, 159 kids paid the one-child fee of $200, 91 paid the second-child fee, and 22 paid the third. And then I provided a breakdown of how that is for each. Ken, is there anything I missed or anything you'd like to add?
Sounds like you got it all.
Ken, do you know if the East Goshen program is a more extensive camp in terms of the hours that kids can attend? Is it an all-day camp?
If I'm not mistaken, I think that is just the morning.
Just the morning.
Yeah, it says it right in the email. It's a half a day for residents.
For East Goshen?
For East Goshen.
One thing I would like to include is this is just the fee structure. This is just the fees and revenues associated with the actual camp program. This doesn't include the sports clinics or any of the extracurricular items that they can register for.
Now, the $106,000 does not include allocation, Ken, or Tom's time in this program?
That is correct. That would just be the fees related that are just to the summer program, not ones that are also carried on. You're right.
And when was this fee structure last adjusted?
That was about 15 years ago. I apologize, I don't know the exact date, but it was approximately.
Okay. Does the board have any other questions, Ken or Chris?
I'd like to ask a couple of questions. Right now, we have 320 children participating in the Township's Summer Camp Program. What is the total capacity that the township can handle?
In terms of the parks, what we have historically used as capacity is 110 at Barker, 110 at Cooper Smith. Community, in the past, we have gone as high as 150 children. For the team program, we figure a capacity of about 50 at Lambert Park. So if you add those up, that would be 260, 370, about 420. Now, I say that we have used those numbers in the past. In terms of what we use as a practical capacity, it depends on how many counselors we're able to get. The hiring has been a little difficult the last couple of years, so community, we have capped at 110 like the rest of the parks. So that way, we make sure there's adequate supervision.
So the answer to my question would be, what is the total capacity for a program?
Yeah, if that's the case, I would say it would be about 380.
380?
With the team program included.
Okay. And right now, we have 320 in the program?
Yeah, is that including the teams? I don't recall.
Tom didn't provide the breakdown including the team program. I'd assume it does because he pulled the registration numbers directly from the online registration.
So we have, what, 60 vacancies? Is that what?
About 50, I would guess. Between, most of those vacancies, I would guess, probably come from the team program. We say there's a capacity of 50. We've never come close to that capacity. Usually, most years, we're between 30 and 30 registered. So we can handle probably more people than there is actually demand for.
So does it cost more for the township if they had a full capacity for the summer camp registration, or a diminished capacity like we have now?
Uh, that's.
Do you have to hire more counselors? Do you have to add?
Right. I mean, we would hire more counselors. Again, Cooper Smith and Community are in capacity, so we would probably hire more counselors at Community Park, so that would be the added expense. Now, how that would offset against the income, I haven't looked at that question, to be honest.
Okay. You're trying to get a handle on what we could do and what, if we increased our capacity by whatever means, if that would be any additional expense, would that be too burdensome for the township?
I don't think so. I think, if I were to take a guess, I would say there are a lot of fixed supply costs that we're already paying at Community Park, so we would be paying more counselors. That would be offset by the fees that we get, and I would think that any additional expense to the township would still fall within that 50% target of subsidy, so I think we'd still be pretty safe.
Obviously, it's our job here to represent the residents of West Goshen. Do residents of West Goshen have first shot at getting these spots?
That is correct. What happens is, now that we move to electronic registration online, West Goshen residents get a one-week head start to register for the Summer Recreation Program. This year, what that meant was Cooper Smith Park filled in about 12 minutes online. West Goshen Community Park did fill up during that one-week period. Now, we did have a waitlist of East Goshen, or not East Goshen, but nonresidents that were all in that West Goshen Community Park list, and every year, you have some people who sign up, and they may have other plans, but they don't want to lose out, and other plans come through, they drop out. That's to be expected. So we were able to accommodate some of the nonresidents on the waitlist for Community Park. Barker Park was not a problem at all. We were able to accommodate a good mix of residents and nonresidents, and the bulk of the 20% of nonresidents who do attend are at Barker Park.
I just have one last question. Is the issue here before the board, is it one of disparity in the fee amount, resident versus nonresident, or is it a matter of financial hardship? And I don't know if that can be really answered, it's more rhetorical.
My understanding, it was a matter of disparity between the fee of resident and nonresident.
Well, then, just following to that, if there is a problem with the West Goshen resident family not being able or made problematic to pay for the fee, is there a way to address that? If there's financial hardship?
Oh, if there's financial hardship for West Goshen families?
Yeah.
Yes. Historically, because it is subsidized, we don't offer any kind of scholarship programs or anything from the township, because they're already getting discount. However, the Board of Directors of the Friends of West Goshen Parks have helped families in the past that have been brought to their township, who live in West Goshen Township, who need assistance. In those instances, if someone contacts me, either they have a financial hardship, or maybe the family doesn't, you know, feel comfortable addressing us, and it may be a neighbor or relative that says, hey, these kids want to come. What I do is I ask the family to send me an email addressing what their hardship is. I then will delete the name of the person, address the person, and forward that to the Board of Directors of the Friends of West Goshen Parks, and the Board of Directors would have the authority then to say, okay, we're going to offer financial assistance to that family.
But they have to be a West Goshen resident?
That is correct.
Okay.
I have one question relative to, how many complaints have you had relative to this in your tenure during West Goshen, where people wanted the same rate as a West Goshen resident?
I'll be honest, this, I don't know if this is the first, but it may very well. I don't recall any others.
And we're only talking about one person and 15% of the population?
Yeah.
Of the total children that come?
Yeah.
Okay. Versus the whole community?
Whatever.
Any other questions from the board? Anyone, any of your names you'd like to comment?
Yeah, what's the age of the teens that are attending the program?
Yeah, the teens are 13 to 15 years old.
Thank you.
Yep.
So just looking back at the original request, it was really to do with someone who did not want to send their child to East Goshen because of lack of friends. Didn't mention the cost factor there, but we can line up the board that East Goshen's much more expensive, and then the complaint was to do with that they couldn't attend our camp at the same price, that was the original issue. So the board's opinion as to whether what we have in place is fair and equitable? Is there any adjustment that anyone would like to recommend? What is the board's thoughts?
I guess I'll speak. There's only been one complaint in many years. They don't pay West Goshen taxes. They pay East Goshen taxes, so they don't contribute. And we need to consider the entire community, not one person.
Okay, so you believe it's fair?
I think it's, yeah, and our program is already very low compared to other nearby townships, and I think we should leave it the way it is.
Do you know, Ken, if, like, East Bradford, office camp, like, kids go to East Bradford, or?
Yeah.
Bayersy House, it might live in West Goshen?
It's kind of an interesting question. I don't have the information about all of the surrounding counties. I'm mostly familiar with Willowstown, East Goshen, and West Chester. And I know East Goshen runs an in-house program like we do, Willowstown contracts that are out to a camp organization that comes in and runs it and so forth. But I will say, we have scheduled a meeting of the Chester County Recreation Departments at the end of August, and we used to do this fairly regularly, but share ideas, sort of know we'll be on top of what everyone is doing, and that's what we're planning to do, is get that kind of information back from neighbors and stuff.
Yeah, I mean, just what you just described, I mean, I'd like to see our program fully utilized, quite frankly. Imagine you would, too, but if you have this information amongst your fellow parks and records, I don't know, we got some spots available, you know, that maybe some nonresidents might be interested in taking advantage of it? It might be a way which we could help fill the capacity. But I guess I agree with Tina. I don't know if there's a problem here that needs to be solved, and certainly be open to any further suggestions about ways to do that. So, but I don't know what action we can take at this point now, dealing with this particular question.
Yeah, and while I agree with you that I would like to see all the potential capacity filled, this year was more a matter of staffing. It just, we hired as many counselors as we could, and hopefully down the line, you know, that may change, and we'll be able to bring in some more, and open up and get more.
But it sounds to me like there's only a small gap between capability and what was actually used. Keep in mind, you just said about counselors, right?
That's right.
Because you said most of the vacancies are in the team program, and therefore you were close to capping out at Community Park anymore. Okay, is there any one differ with Tina John's opinion? Very good. Mike, Ken, we appreciate you doing some research for us.
Thank you.
Clearly, as you look at the program for next year, hopefully you'll have, you know, some insights and collaboration with your colleagues, and maybe it'll be something you might want to bring to the board before the program opens up next year, if there's any change of view.
Who wants to respond to Mr. Musi?
So obviously, we'll document the decision here, and then I can respond to him since he approached me.
Okay.
Very good. Next on the agenda is presentation of the West Goshen Township Sustainability Advisory Committee on Tree Plan for West Goshen Township, also for possible through, I think, Henry, you're going to walk us through this.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah? That's probably the best one.
Yeah.
Susan Sharps of the SAC has been the person who has been heavily involved in this, and she couldn't be here tonight, so I'm filling in for her on that. And basically, the tree ordinance requires that the SAC annually prepare a tree plan, and that we submit it to the Board of Supervisors for their review and approval after going to the Parks and Recreation. And so that's what we've done. We have passed it through the Parks and Recreation. They reviewed it, and then it came back to the SAC, and we approved, and sent it on to you for approval. The approval is required as part of the Tree City process, where to be a Tree City Township, you have to have an approval plan. The major part of this has to do with canopy and trees, and the desire to have a greater tree coverage throughout the township, in the township parks. And what the SAC is recommending is that we come up to a certain level of coverage over a period of time. And to put this into perspect, perspective, Melanie Wild has put together this tree canopy study, and at the upper middle, you'll see an unreadable table, which indicates the percentage of tree coverage of 12 to 13 parks.
Henry, would you like to come in and zoom in on anything there?
Sure.
Let me see if I can.
So what Melanie Wild and her students did was to identify the average of each of the 12 to 13 parks, one was not included, and then figured the tree canopy coverage of each the parks, and the runner-up, second-largest land cover. And then went back to the U.S. Forest Service Canopy Goals for Urban Trees, and recommended that there be at least 40% coverage in each of the township parks, to be figured more or less based on the usage of the park itself. So that was the thinking of it, and we're requesting that this plan be adopted. We understand that this could be, this aspirational goal for more tree coverage will be folded into the work that's soon to be conducted for the overall review of parks throughout the township, and with coordination with the Parks and Recreation Group. So with that, are there any questions concerning?
One. The third column in says tree canopy cover. The first example would be 30.2. Is that what is existing now, the percentage of cover we have existing now?
Yes.
Okay, and then the next column after that, what is the second-largest land cover? What does that mean?
That is 54% coverage is grass.
Okay, so 54% is grass, and?
30.2% is tree.
Is tree. I got you. Okay, so 54.2 is total grass. Okay, I got you. Thank you.
Yeah, a couple of questions, Henry. I mean, a couple of these parks, like the skate park and Dog Park, I mean, they really don't lend themselves to plant trees in. I mean, they would detract from this function. I mean, I'm sure they're getting accepted into this plan?
I think that what's going to happen is this aspirational goal of 40% will be incorporated into the other, the needs, the other needs of the park system, and it will be part of the values that go into that.
And that kind of also fresh meadows park, too, we've got to fit into that category, too, because it's a meadow. You know, you don't want trees in a meadow. It's a corporate. It's just.
I disagree. I disagree. I think that actually trees would really contribute to the skate park. It's a lot of the perimeter's coverage there, it's hot, there's a lot of kids there.
You mean, which part?
The skate park and the dog park.
You mean at the perimeter, right? You mean around the perimeter all day?
I mean, anywhere we can look, yeah.
There is some concern with the skate park that leaves would cause slipperiness on ramps. That's one concern there. But just generally, if you think back to the tree conditions of previous eras, and how nice it is to go down a street with trees, it's a plus, and that's something that is being considered. Also, when you're out in Community Park, in most parts of Community Park, today or yesterday, when you got the sun beating down on you, it would be nice to have some areas which are tree, not everything, but so. So that's the aspirational goal which the committee had planned.
I have another question. How do you figure time into this calculation for your percentage of coverage, canopy coverage? When you plant a tree today, that's a sapling, 10 years down the road, it's a big tree, and of course, the canopy has increased and so forth and so forth. So how do you determine how many trees to plant to accomplish achieving the goal of 40% canopy cover across the board?
I really think that's going to be part of the next effort in considering one of the needs of the township parks. Where do you want the trees? What is the reason for placing the trees there? What would be the separation between trees? Do you want them at five-foot centers, or do you want them placed around somewhere where it gives good canopy over a period of, over an area, without, while being able to see through underneath the canopy, and be able to have recreation in all that? So I think there's a lot to be concerned about placing the trees over and above 60 and 40%.
And I think that the data was gathered using drones, is that right? So using GIS, or I guess GIS software? What about GIS?
It was GIS. I know I sent, I sent Melanie a few shots from like Chesapeake use and things like that, so I initially used that as part of the data gathering.
Yeah, so I mean, moving forward, John, to sort of address your question, I think it will be possible to sort of predict canopy coverage based on the GIS and, you know, images from the air. I'll be able to see if we plant as many trees here, this is the area of the park we want to cover, and then we can sort of take that percentage requirement and meet those goals.
And I have to keep, the thing we have to keep in mind is planting trees, tending trees, taking trees down at the end of their life has a cost to it, and that has to factor into where you plant trees, how many you, how many you plant.
So I guess overall, Henry, we didn't do too bad. It looks like our goal was 40%, and so there's only six parks that really don't need that 40% out of all the parks. So overall, I guess it's pretty good.
Henry, how do you see this working out in terms of the design of additional canopy cover? I mean, we're going to do a, I'd like to approve this RFP, the scope, or some, you know, the consultant to do a strategy for all the parks. Are we going, I'm not sure we're going to get a detailed tree plan out of that, that was not included in the scope. We may just get a more repeat back that, yes, you should target 40% coverage in Community Park. Is it the SAC that's going to enter designing it and recommending for Parks and Recreation to us? How are we going to get the actual design of what canopy cover we should add to Community Park, for example?
I imagine the SAC can assist in that process, but I don't know enough about what is coming up in respect to parks and the overall planning that is starting to occur, to be able to know how much design is going to go into that.
So I can kind of address this a little bit. We could incorporate this sort of document into the planning effort, and as part of the task force outlined in the RFP, I did include a member of the SAC as a representative on that task force, so they... as a representative on that task force, so they would kind of have a say in the planning process that would go on. And then we would then take that and incorporate this into any sort of like master plan that we do for any sort of, any park in the township, so that we can just use this as a tool for future planning efforts. We could include this as an appendix as the overall goal.
Yeah, I think we need to kind of figure out what we're going to get back from the ninety thousand dollars in terms of, are we going to get one or two parks that leave? The priority ones that all this is here, with the detail, this is where you should plant some additional trees, you know, whether it's alongside the walking trail, or this or that or the other. That might need to be a deliverable from the scope of work. So I'm just thinking out loud.
I would, I would agree. And we would incorporate that as part of the, part of the planning effort, because I think there's also talk, if I'm remembering the RFP correctly, that we put together, I think that the RFP document does talk about environmental sensitivity and F O resources to a certain extent. So this could be included in part of that discussion.
I think when we get to that on the agenda, we could maybe action to provide a paragraph around expectation, what the deliverable piece of this.
Absolutely.
Okay. Other questions for Henry? Anyone intending to have a question?
Yeah, just wondering why South Concord Park isn't on here.
Is that Bickin Park?
That is on there.
Maybe the thirteenth park.
It's probably the thirteenth park, yeah.
Is it?
Yeah.
Should it be?
I don't know why it's on. I think it was overlooked by the students as they put together the listing plans.
Thirteen parks, South Concord will be assessed and added to the study as soon as possible.
Okay.
So any questions here, then?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Go ahead, Henry, John.
Well, it's just, this whole thinking about as a result of studying from some students from West Coast University, and they just didn't get to South Concord. So the thirteenth park, South Concord, will be assessed and added to the study as soon as feasible.
Great.
So it's in works.
Okay, thanks.
And how about Greystone? Is Greystone going to be part of this plan?
It's going to be fairly high in terms of tree.
It probably should be when it's under the township's allocation.
I think it's going to be forty percent overall, right then and there.
So what are you looking for tonight, Henry? Are we approving this, this one page in terms of this is the approved plan for tree canopy goal or?
The approved, yeah, the approved plan, it says West Coast Township Tree Plan.
Okay, so approving the document then?
Yes.
Yes.
And this was approved by Parks and Rec?
It was run by Parks and Rec. They seem, they didn't have any problems with it, and it was referred back to the SAC.
Yeah, the Park Recreation Party did not have any objections or concerns about it.
And the SAC, at their meeting on the twenty-seventh, voted unanimously to recommend approval.
One last question for me. Under the priorities of 2023, you mentioned Cooper Smith would be the secondary priority for 2023, after Hamlet Crest Park, which we're going to be done more planting at Hamlet Crest. Is there some plan in the works already for Cooper Smith for this year, or is it not like you have?
There are no plans for Cooper Smith. The only thing that is planned at this time is a November fourth planting of eighty trees in Hamlet Crest in addition to the hundred and twenty trees that are there at this time. And that is, that can be a, it's not going to be as large a deal as it was for the original effort.
Okay. Thanks, Henry. Any other questions?
Yeah, what does it mean by the canopy cover was not assessed for street trees?
The assessment is only for the parks and not the streets themselves, that is the street, the trees that are along the street that are within the right of way.
Oh, okay.
For township parks.
Is that a future goal to look at that?
Sorry.
Is that a future goal in just?
Yes, yes, it is.
Okay.
It just, we have been waiting on the study to be completed, and we're over halfway through the year of for the 2023 plan. So this is, this is what can be produced at this time, and the 2024 plan will be more robust.
Okay. Last chance of questions, anyone? Okay, so I would like to make a motion then to approve the 2023 tree plan for West Coast Township.
Second half?
Continue. Any questions or comments on the board on the motion? Any public comments or questions? If you don't think a vote or if they would say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Is there any opposition? Motion passes five zero. Thank you. Thank you, Henry.
Right.
Thank you to Susan, too.
Over there.
Next on the agenda is item number six, presentation from Chris Peterson of Carroll Engineering and Kirsten Hennig, also from Keystone Engineering regarding the plan for, the plan for the infrastructure for expanded electric vehicle charging stations and possible authorization to bid the project.
Chris, before you start, I'm just going to frame where we are with the context of the project at this point.
So obviously, the board expressed an interest in looking at what an electric vehicle future would look like for the township fleet. Obviously, the near-term opportunities generally are in the light vehicle fleets, so the administration vehicles, maybe some police vehicles in the detective division, et cetera. At this point, we don't have an identified old vehicle. There's an E V, public works, trucks, heavy-duty equipment is more down the road. So we envisage this as a phase project over time. But we can clearly see that over the next few years, we have an opportunity, opportunity to replace existing gas vehicles with E Vs to service the administration-type duties. And therefore, the first phase was to look at what we could do with level-two chargers, charging stations, based on the existing capacity in the electrical rooms that we have. And then subsequent phases would look at level-three charging, et cetera, maybe need for additional power to the site. So tonight, we're really focused on the first phase of this project, which is level-two charging for the admin-type vehicles. Thanks. What about you, Chris?
Thank you for having us here tonight.
Chris, unfortunately, I think the batteries might have died, and so I apologize.
Forgot my water. Hope everybody had a nice fourth. Thank you for providing a nice summary there. I'm going to continue with that, too. So yes, the township's direction and coordination with Keystone Engineering, Carroll Engineering, has completed the preliminary plans for phase one of the E V charging stations to be installed at the municipal complex. Before you, we have the, just a tip of the site plan of where every street is going to go. I have also a diagrammatic version of this plan that I'm going to go to next. It's a little bit easier to read, so I'm going to go to that now, actually, just walk you through what's included in this study. So as you touched on, we completed a study in coordination with Keystone in October of last year and examined the existing, the existing infrastructure at all four buildings. So we have building A here, which is where we are now presently, which is utilized by the administrative staff. We have what's referred to as the building B here, that's utilized by PD. And then we have some partial utilization of building C by both PD and municipal maintenance. And then we have the streets building, number here is building D. So phase one focuses on the first three buildings I've touched on. The goal here is to provide the infrastructure for the ultimate build-out of what the panels can handle based on that study that I mentioned in October of 2022. So we took a look at what space is available, what existing power demand is here now, and recommendations were made as to what can be installed at this time with the infrastructure that you have in place. So to just make it simple, we provided dots as to what's actually going in as part of phase one. So the blue dots is where we plan to install dual level-two electric vehicle charger at this time to accommodate what vehicles you do have on the fleet to date. The green would represent a stub and a conduit that's being put in at this time that can accommodate just the placement of the charger unit itself. So the infrastructure is there to, to eventually wire this and then purchase the unit as you have more vehicles come online. So, you know, it's, they both basically have the same general outlet. So they both basically have two bollards that would sit behind the existing curb line that would protect the unit, and then the unit would sit behind those two bollards on the existing sidewalk area. So we have a strip of existing curb right here. We also have a strip of the existing curb right here on building A. So these chargers would sit then behind that curb line. And then the site improvements that are involved with some of this work would be to expand the existing sidewalks to provide adequate space for pedestrians. Now, how do they go align these charging units? And I can, do you want to add?
Yeah. I'm sorry. You can stay here. But I'll just add that there is a nuanced difference in the maintenance building, and that is that those chargers will be wall-mounted instead of bollard-mounted in order to not get in the way of cars driving generally or whatever. So the other ones will be bollard-mounted that are outside, so they'll have a pedestal that they are mounted on.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point. So for, for the chargers of building A and B, portions of the conduit here running to this future stub, and then also from the electrical room here in A down to each one of these subsequent conduit stubs will need to be trenched with the conduit underneath some grade, and then it will stub up where the locations are shown for you now. And as you touched on, in the maintenance building, everything can be done on the interior of the building, so there's no disturbance there. And the charger is a little bit different. You can choose different models from charge point. So right now, you have a charge point station here. We're looking at using the same units here and here, which is a bollard mount, and this would be a wall mount, since this is a rock.
So the existing unit is not represented on this diagram, correct?
It's not on the diagram, but if you zoom in, there's text.
Yeah.
That would be right here. You're seeing the two bollards here, and the unit sits just beyond it.
I have a question on the conduit run. So is it an individual conduit run to each location, or is there a shared conduit that then has stubs off it for the future ones?
Sure. That's a really good question, because I did look into the engineering background of this of how can I combine these conduit? The result is that it's an individual conduit, two each bollard. There are two circuits that will be run in that eventually when you do put in the chargers, obviously with the ones you're putting in, well, it's two circuits. Per the National Electric Code, there is an ambient temperature correction factor that you have to apply when you have four or more current carrying conductors. So we'll have four current carrying conductors to each bollard. And as I started adding up, trying to combine them, it was cost prohibitive to try to combine them, because you ended up, instead of being somewhere around six gauge wire, you ended up having to go to like three off-wire just to serve the same load, but because of the ambient temperature corrections, I ended up trying to use like a forty percent temperature correction factor, AKA meaning that you can only use forty percent of the ampacity rating of the conductor. So it seemed fairly cost prohibitive, and a better option just keeps it separate since we're already running two circuits in conduit.
Okay.
So it would be per line, my ambient correction factor in the N C is eighty percent correction factor. So that means you can use eighty percent of the available ampacity, and that's because of the four current carrying conductors in each conduit as per our current design. If I were to try to combine them, I tried this at building C to the three chargers, and I ended up with like a two-inch conduit that would have to, or I think it was larger than two, three-inch conduit, that would have to have these extra-large cables that really aren't being utilized to the best of their capability because of that ambient temperature correction factor. Thanks.
Just to follow up on the condo questions, on your opinion of probable cost, you had a line out of number eleven for conduit sub total of thirty thousand plus. Now, was that a P V C conduit or E N T or rigid metal conduit? Which is?
I'll have to look at that in more detail, but I believe we were just planning on using a rigid metal conduit.
Rigid metal conduit, R M C?
Yes.
My copy of your print was rather small.
Okay.
So my magnifying glass, you know, to get it to be so big, I could not find anywhere on there a designation of the conduit being R M C. I saw it as being inch and a half, but where is it on these prints showing it that it should be R M C?
Yes.
That's going to be a critical factor for any contractor to bid this job, to know what conduit is, whether it's P V C, R M C, or whatever.
I agree. It's not on, there are written specifications also associated with the job. So it is listed in the specification. There's an application section in the specification.
Okay.
That basically defines or determines where you would use a different conduit.
And tell me a reasoning for using R M C as opposed to P V C? I mean, R M C, let me hear your reasoning.
Yeah, sure. So anywhere above ground, R M C is preferred because you could be subject to damage, especially in the maintenance building. And I also considered that right through the police building, that it's probably the best bet to just run it up above ground since we're crossing through the entirety of the building, it seems. In the A building, we're coming out of the electric room. It's more of a infrastructure room. So again, the consideration is to use R M C rather than P V C. It's just a safer, safer option to protect the wire.
Other questions? So in totally, the capability of this project will allow up to twenty-two individual charging vehicles, correct?
So I believe that is correct. I always get confused on the dual versus single, so let me just confirm that. Yes, the number is twenty-two, and however, it's eleven dual charging vehicles. So yes.
And is, so just to confirm, is it feasible for twenty-two vehicles to plug in and be being charged overnight without a problem with the electric panels and the supply?
Yes, so I performed a paper study, and per my paper study calculation, yes, a hundred percent feasible to do that. You have seventy-five KVA rated transformers, and we're going to be using somewhere around forty-five at the worst-case scenario. So you are more than adequate on that front. At the police department building, we're planning on doing a brand-new transformer for that. It's a forty-five KVA transformer. It's completely dedicated to the chargers, and so that transformer will be able to handle all the load on that. I believe the capillary load over there is less than thirty KVA.
As far as, maybe you don't know this answer, but as far as our generators, are they able to handle it, the capacity along with all of our other electrical stuff in the building in the event we lose electricity?
Yeah, it's also a very good question. I did look into the generator a little bit. I did not spend too much time on it because the consideration was provided to me that majority of the time when you're using all of it, it would be overnight. So during the day, it's expected that you'll be using a lot less. Also, overnight, you're using, you're using less load throughout the building, you're not running your lights. So using that consideration, yes, the generator is adequate. If we were to try to run everything during the day and everything in the buildings plus the chargers, I have a little less confidence in saying that the generator is adequate, but I find it difficult to believe that that would be the case, that you're running all of those loads.
Because I imagine we would be running some cars during the day, right? Wouldn't we? Yeah, I mean, not all of them, but...
Agreed.
Yeah, okay.
According to the script of work here for the project, it says including, the project will include installing conduits, so on and so forth, and provisions for a load management system as each charging station is installed abroad online. So I didn't see anywhere on the prints there for a load shedding system or a load management system. And from what your comments you just made, it doesn't seem as if you feel that that would be necessary.
At this stage, it's not necessary. I think as you get into further stages of the project...
It's probably a level-three chargers and stuff like that.
...yet, it probably is a good idea to consider. As far as I understand, for the charge point chargers that you currently use, they have the capability of adding in an R F D or R F I D chip, or there's another chip that basically connects it via Wi-Fi. Once it's connected via Wi-Fi, they do have a cloud-based load management system that you can pay for at that time. So the charger is built and ready to do that. So the charger is built and ready to do that. It wouldn't be an additional part and we are not providing that at this time. It's not necessary.
So in other words, your load management system would basically be an electronic one rather than a mechanical load shedding?
That's correct. That's correct. Yep.
Any other questions? Do you want to take any other questions? Is there any comment from staff on, I know you've obviously been working closely with Carol Engineering and East Penn here, so any comments or concern?
Just one last comment. This will be subject to the responsible contractor ordinance that we passed last year, correct? Do you understand that? Just going after bid?
Okay, well then I would like to make the motion to approve the design ready for bidding.
Still moving.
Any questions or comments on the motion? Any public comments or questions?
Did you make the motion?
I did.
Okay, I see.
Okay, we're ready to take a vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposition? No, the motion passes by zero. Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Chris. And appreciate you.
Thank you.
Project to run.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
I took that out of the box, I'm sorry.
Okay, next up is item number seven, continued discussion regarding the installation of a solar energy array on the West Goshen Township Public Works Department facility, known as building D. Chris?
Mr. Chairman, at the June 6th meeting, the board supervisors discussed the installation of a solar energy array on the roof of the Public Works building. We had engaged with Carol Engineering to have a structural analysis completed on the roof of the Public Works building and the report indicated that the roof is capable of supporting the proposed array. Subsequent to this, I spoke with Solar Renewable Energy to understand the next steps of the process. As previously discussed, there were two as it relates to financing. They were to, they were, they're to finance the project as would be done typically with any sort of construction project or engage what's called a power services agreement, which would essentially operate in a similar fashion to a lease of the equipment. The SAC also met with representatives from SRE to discuss the process and voted to, at that meeting, to recommend proceeding forward with this project. At the June 6th meeting, the board did discuss, did discuss this project and the following action items, to review other possible vendors through Co-Stars to provide this kind of service, speak with representatives from other municipalities who have experience with SRE, contact Township's property and liability insurance carrier regarding additional coverage that may be required and speak with our finance director regarding a budgetary supplement and the capital reserve fund for this project. So I'll go over each of those action items as well as a little bit of, a little bit of additional supplementary information. In terms of Co-Stars, Mr. Woodward reviewed Co-Stars as well as another company, another organization we use called Sourcewell. A review of Co-Stars indicates that SRE is the only approved vendor for this service. Is correct, Dave? They're the only approved vendor for the service through the Co-Stars program and there were no, there were no options available through the Sourcewell program. What was the, you looked at GSA as well?
Yeah, nothing.
And there was nothing there. So if the board were to go Co-Stars, SRE is the only option through, through any sort of cooperative purchasing program. I know typically under the, under the Co-Stars program, there are certain requirements they wouldn't be subject to. I know we talked about the responsible contract ordinance, however, if the board was to do that, they could have them, have requested they meet those requirements. In terms of speaking with other municipalities with their experience with SRE, I've not had the opportunity yet to speak with East Pensborough Township. Unfortunately, our schedules just didn't align, but I did speak with the manager of Lower Allen Township, who did speak positively of their experience working with them. They did say that it took quite a period of, quite a long period of time. I'm just going to pull my notes out momentarily. They did do a, they've done three agreements with them, which are a power services agreement and access agreement and a solar renewable energy credit agreement. And it said they had, it was good working with them, but it took approximately, it did take approximately two years to get the system installed. They did ground mounted arrays and it meets 95% of their energy needs and they have one other project still under construction for Public Works and they will most likely purchase the agreement after the five-year period is up. And they have seen a cost savings from selling energy credits and not having to purchase energy. I also spoke with, in addition to that, I spoke with the, I emailed the manager, Phoenix, Phoenixville Borough, who said that they decided to purchase their system outright and did not do a power services agreement and their rationale behind that was based on technology. They did not really want to be tied into outdated, potentially outdated technology because of how rapidly things change.
Which one is that?
I think they wanted the option to change things. If I'm reading into it correctly, they wanted, they didn't want the option, they didn't want to be stuck with something under some kind of an agreement for a set period of time when technology changes so rapidly. So if they wanted to change it out, they wanted that flexibility. I also spoke with West Whiteland Township today. They're still kind of in the fact finding phase of their project, but it looks like they're going to go down the path of not doing a power services agreement financing outright. They're looking at three projects at their township building, parks, public works facility. Their rationale behind that is they feel that the powers, the gentleman I spoke with from West Whiteland says that they feel that the power services agreement removes a lot of the incentives that are there for solar energy, such as like the credit that's available through the Inflation Reduction Act. So they just don't, they feel it's more financially beneficial to, the gentleman I spoke with said it was more financially beneficial to just purchase it outright than then or power services agreement, which I can understand what he's saying.
Did they indicate whether they would propose to bid the project or to use SRE through Co-Stars?
They hadn't made a decision yet. They were looking at both, they were looking more towards bidding than to going through the Co-Stars program, but they haven't gotten that far in their evaluation yet. The gentleman I spoke with at Lower Allen Township said that they were debating between bidding the project out or going with SRE through Co-Stars and ultimately decided to go through the Co-Stars program due, in order to more or less expedite the process. It would have taken longer through bidding. In terms of the township's property and liability insurance to add the array would increase our premium by $2,500 annually, based on the estimated $500,000 cost of the project.
So that would be for catastrophic damage in the event of a?
Correct.
Or payment something destroyed it?
Correct. They did recommend that the township consider obtaining a builder's risk policy and provide broader coverage for materials, labor and the cost of installation and that this could be done by the township or it could be made part of the contract with the vendor.
Did they say cost of that cost?
No.
In addition to $2,500 annually?
No, they did not.
That's just a one-time during construction. That's not our.
It wouldn't be ongoing.
Yeah. During, while constructing it.
Wouldn't we want that cover through, coverage through the?
Contractor.
Yeah, contract. Probably what we would ask for in this.
Yeah, but you would ultimately pay for it.
Yeah, that's fine, but we wouldn't have to get a separate coverage for it.
So there would be some additional premium cost, but given the grand scheme of what our property liability insurance premium is, it's relatively nominal. And then finally, I did, I did speak with our finance director. The township allocated $200,000 into the 2023 budget in the capital reserve fund for this work based on the electrical study that was completed. This was primarily for the EV charging stations and associated engineering work and to date, we've spent approximately $14,500. And under the second class township code, the board may make supplemental appropriations to, to the budget. As Mr. Peterson outlined in the presentation, the materials board, the estimate of probable cost for the EV project is about $259,000. As such, the allocation would already be over budget by an estimated roughly $73,600 based on that estimate. And with $500,000 estimated cost from SRE, the total budgetary supplement to take everything together would be about $574,000. However, I don't know if we would know the full impact until we receive the bid results from the EV, EV project because I know we've been provided an estimated cost, but until you get the bids back, you're not really going to know the full impact of the cost. So at this point, oh, I'm sorry.
Just a couple of questions on the cost side here. So Chris, the projected cost for the project, that does not include Carol's cost for bidding and construction oversight?
That was originally included in our proposal to do this, this work for the three-phase one step. So that would be, that would be above?
That would be an additional cost to the 73 that we're already over, right? Already over what we think.
That's correct. It's already been authorized, but you have that work.
It's going back to the task of the solar array of 500,000. The only note we have is from SRE, which is net of all the benefits they obtained from the tax credits and everything else, I believe. It was cost presented to us in terms of what the township cost would be. So if we were to build this thing, probably getting more like 700,000 and then we would get the credit back that they would have been getting otherwise. If we did a direct build ourselves, the actual upfront cost is going to be more like 700 and somewhat thousand. Then we would get 30% construction cost rebate through the IRA, which would lower the net to the 500,000 range of what I believe they're saying would be through the power services agreement. Maybe wrong on that, but that's, I think I have to just make sure we know which word that is. I mean.
I'm not really sure what you mean. So you're saying that?
So if they're saying that 500,000 is a cost to the township, that they are getting benefits of tax credits and things that offset their cost?
SRE is?
SRE is, yes.
So our upfront cost would be?
So we, we don't do a power service agreement and go out and bid this. We'd like to get, my understanding would be that we're going to get bids more like three quarters of a million to do it. And then, since we're funding it, we will be eligible to get the 30% construction cost credit back from the government, from the government.
So why is SRE only eligible to get that 30% and like offer that to us and none of the upcoming?
They have historically, since we've not been eligible for tax credits, the way these deals have been structured is for the developer to own it, get the accelerating credits, benefits upfront and then lower the cost in terms of the actual cost to the.
So if we buy it outright, will it still be that fee or are you saying that we do PSA?
It would be the same either way, right?
Under my understanding of this, the way this was changed under the Inflation Reduction Act is now is no longer a tax credit based on the cost of construction. So you get a 30% rebate back from the federal government based on the cost of the construction. Since the township doesn't pay taxes, we're not eligible to get a tax rebate, which is what the original proposal was like.
But now because of the Inflation Reduction Act, you would be eligible.
Correct.
Enough for tax.
Correct.
Construction rebate.
Be like reimbursement.
Reimbursement, yeah.
But again, I don't know if you're going to really have an idea of what the, what the full budgetary supplement should be until we either, until the board either makes a determination on PSA versus paying for it outright or bidding versus going through Co-Stars.
Okay, well, let's see if we can get the conclusion on either of those tonight.
And I also, and again, I don't think we'll also know the full impact until we get the bid results from the EV charging station project. So just to summarize, I believe that had all the action items that the board was looking for this evening. So in looking at, I think the two, the options that are really before the board are whether or not to utilize SRC through Co-Stars, through the Co-Stars program or bid the project out through the normal bidding process and whether or not to purchase the equipment outright or pursue a PSA. Based on just my recommendation, based on my discussion with colleagues pertaining to PSA versus purchasing the equipment outright, I think the township should purchase the equipment outright and not through the power services agreement. I think we'll maximize the benefits under doing it outright versus doing the power services agreement. I also don't know if it makes a lot of sense to buy some, to make six years' worth of payments and then pay for something when we know that we can fund it ourselves. So if the board does choose to go through the Co-Stars program, as I previously said, they typically would not be subject to the requirements of chapter 65 of the code ordinances, which are our responsible contractor requirements. That only requires subject to public bidding. That being said, the board could choose to require that SRE demonstrate compliance with the requirements in this chapter of desire. I've spoken with.
Do we know if they can? No?
We, we don't know. That's, that's a question.
They can in your stuff.
Yeah. The first question to ask is if you want to go down the Co-Stars program, we can send them, we can send them the requirements and they could have, they would have to respond accordingly.
So we have no, they meet those requirements today?
No, we don't.
And what if they decline to meet those requirements and they don't?
You can't force them. They choose out to bid.
And we're off to a bid process.
Correct.
Yeah. Unless we, so by default, maybe we should look at that information first.
Well, does anybody know other, other contractors out there that, that do, I mean, is that a common type of contract that would meet that, that would meet the requirement for the RCO? I just don't know.
I don't think.
No, the trade or?
Should we find out first?
They're probably out there.
No, I mean, should we find out whether the SRC?
SRE.
SRE.
Well, let's, let's have.
It's our chapter first before we make a decision.
Maybe we don't need to, maybe we can make a decision that says, we're not interested in using Co-Stars. We should bid a project that's going to cost three quarters of a million dollars.
We should.
So let's, let's see if we answer that question.
So.
So Chris, have you finished around the power services agreement? I know you just.
Oh, yes.
So let's address that particular question first. Does the board support that recommendation from, from staff that the best option for us is to purchase this upfront, get the credit back from the IRA, from the federal government, own the system outright from day one versus the previous historical way of doing it when townships weren't eligible for these tax credits, which is to enter into these power service agreements?
I'd just like to speak on that. I attended the Cato conference on June 26th and I went to the climate action plan workshop in the afternoon and attending there was presenters for Jane Crack from Phoenixville Borough, he's the manager there, and also Wyatt Williams, he's the sustainability coordinator from West Whiteland Township. And they both talked about solar panel installations. Of course, Phoenixville, Chris already mentioned, has installed one back in 2018, so that like it's something new for them. But they, he was very clear, he said they, because they had the resources, they went ahead, put the project out to bid, they owned and had owned the solar panel array and felt that was the best way to go. And also the fellow from West Whiteland also indicated they felt the same way as well. Especially now with the fact that the Inflation Reduction Act allows non-taxable entities like a township such as us to realize the tax, the tax credit, then it just makes it all the more sense. If you had the ability to be able to put the capital upfront for you to go ahead and put it out for bid and to own the solar array yourself, it just makes financial sense to go that way. The cost benefit analysis becomes very clear.
Yes, Chris.
I do just want to add from our limited experience with solar and we have worked with SRE in the past, but Lansdale Borough at their Wexford tree plant, they put in a solar system. I believe they also purchased it outright. I don't believe solar renewable energy was involved and PSI was the contractor that did all that work. So there are definitely electrical contractors out there confident and capable. So just to put that question to rest.
Okay, thank you. I fully support what Jonathan said. I mean, we have basically a very healthy balance in the township. In fact, we've invested $19 million in CDs, which is beyond our liquidity needs to operate the township fund. So we have absolutely the capital to invest in this. Just want to remind everyone, this actually has a healthy payback. We are going to save money on electrical costs. Yes, there's the upfront cost, but you rapidly get a payback on this project. So over the, whatever it was, 30, 40-year life of the panels, it is a, it will be saving taxpayer money. So I, since we have the capital, I fully support the advantage of owning it outright and given the financial incentives from the federal government, I really believe that's the way to go. Can we make that decision as a board tonight then?
Yes, I can.
You're on the board, probably, okay?
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, so that's, that question answered. Next question is, do we want to invite, do we want to go out for bids and invite people to bid like Kirsten just said, like PSI and others who are capable of doing a design, build, install for us on these, this type of project and invite a competitive bid process? Or do we believe that using a Co-Stars approved vendor is the way to go? What are the board's thoughts?
I, when you're dealing with that much money, I personally like to bid it out versus being locked in with one contractor. I don't know if you see what the bids are. I don't know if you see what the bids are, I like to be competitive.
And of course, we could invite SRE to bid.
Yeah, we can invite them.
We could invite them to bid, and they have to meet all the requirements in the bid process.
I agree with you, I think that's where you're going to put it out to bid, they can be competitive.
Okay. In which case, we will need our engineer to produce a scope of work for a design-build project. I see nodding heads over there, so you can do that, yeah?
Can I ask a question?
So we need to see a price to do that then, Chris, please.
So we also get a price from HRG?
Well, depends what the price is going to be, right? So we don't always know, you know, whether it'll be expensive, it depends how much work is required to develop the scope, et cetera. I don't know whether you have a feel off the top of your head for what kind of order magnitude prices might be, Chris.
I'm going to have to tell you before it hits your.
So, you know, with that as an answer, then it's hard for the board to decide whether we need to.
I guess another major unknown for us at this point is that, you know, we've not been through a project where we've had to certify whether something meets your requirements for a responsible contractor. And based on our experience of other municipalities, when that comes into play, there is, you know, a measurable amount of time that's now added to, you know, the administration and the bidding process that goes along with that, and so a lot of times you'll get the best answer out of contractors to whether or not they do satisfy, whether there's an apprenticeship program, and you sort of have to do a pull-up fact-checking in certain instances. Again, this is just speaking from experience and jobs that we've done in White Marsh for the authority, so I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there. So that's something I'm going to wrap my head around, really digest your words a little bit better, because I've not had the opportunity to look at that yet.
Then I may perhaps like to suggest is maybe we should get two prices, one from Cal, one from HRG, for both, an initial preparation of scope of work and bid management, and then also a separate number of construction oversight as well. So we just do it one time, we know what the total cost of having our engine, any engineer or representative township deal with the project that worked with the board.
And one thing the Borough of Westonstern has had, and probably five or six different projects now that they've been out, where they're going through the learning curve of making sure that the contractors that had the lowest bid, who were given notice to award, there is a process that I was involved in, in sort of helping them navigate through that ordinance, and obviously will help you, and don't have to start from ground line because your ordinances are very similar. So have checklist, have the actual certification that you send after you do your due diligence, so you can definitely be involved in that.
Thank you, Chris. I mean, the sewer authority, West Goshen Sewer Authority, just received bids back on a project that had our RCO as a requirement, and the solicitors and sewer authorities involved in giving that information. Okay, Chris, you're clear on the way forward then?
Yep, so we're going to get prices from Carol Engineering, HRG, for design, build, bid, and construction oversight services.
Yeah.
And while, since I have Chris in the room, should we target the August fifteenth meeting to present those proposals to the board to give them time to ramp around everything?
Is that sound okay, Chris?
Or would the, or actually, would August first work?
It's a bit close, isn't it?
Or would that be too close?
There's a lot of vacation time, like somewhere.
If the board is coming.
If you're not on vacation this week, that means you've got some coming up, right?
There's someone that I can afford, so.
If the board is okay, we'll target August fifteenth.
Yeah.
Chris?
Good question. When you say design builds, are you implying that you'll specifically invite contractors, or are you going to open it up to public contractors?
So we would open it up to public, we would open it up to public contractors, publicly bid, but the goal would be for the contractor to design the rooftop system and then ultimately construct that.
Okay.
I mean, I do want to, in the bid documents, include, you know, performance guarantees around outpour and everything, very similar to what SRE had in terms of the key design aspects of what they believe is doable for that roof.
Yeah.
We want to basically incorporate a lot of that information as the expected deliverable from the project, and if they can't meet it, what can they meet?
Did SRE give you electrical connections-wise how they would do that?
No.
Okay, so that's where, you know, I would be a little bit concerned, just, we've really looked at the feasibility of tying the solar system in, where are you going to put the inverters? Most likely, they're not going to be up on the roof, and so where can we put them in maintenance building? Those are definitely going to be questions that come up with the contractor.
In my mind, the contractor would be the person who would be saying, here's how you should do that.
Yeah, yeah.
And then Chris and Kirsten would be the ones reviewing that and saying that this is acceptable.
Okay.
And of course, the contractor would have proper certifications to be able to do all that.
Yeah, that makes sense, that makes sense.
Well, I'll just get into a little bit of conversation we had last night on the sewer authority relative to qualifications of the contractor, or do you feel as though the responsible contractor would need those requirements?
That is a great question, because if you meet responsible contractor requirements, you may never have done a solar install.
Right.
But, you know, PSIs don't want, but.
You want to be careful about their qualifications.
So do we need to, Chris, you'll need to weigh in on this too, can we specify in the scope of work, some kind of experience necessary to be considered a responsible contractor and qualified to do the work?
If you're doing system integration services, you one thousand percent can put that in the documents. So I would look at this the same way. System integration services is very specific. This is a solar project, it's very specific, so you should be able to ask for what projects have you done that are solar.
Actually, what I suggested may put that generic language in there, that they have to have throughout ten years' experience, I don't know what it would be, but say ten years' experience, specific regarding the scope of work in this document. Again, that could be.
Or certain number of similarly sized projects.
Right, again, that could.
Size problems better than, because that's five years, because they could have done it ten years ago and not since.
Right, and again, that's subjective, could be subjective, but at least you have a smaller pool.
Just sort of expand on that. So let's say we put it out, we say, provide us with the other townships or any scope of work that relates to this. We get some bidders back that are coming really low, that have only done maybe one.
That's my point, that's right. If you set in, if you set as a specification that they have to have, for example, they have both done, completed, successfully completed five similar design build projects, and they give you a bid that shows only two, or they give you a bid that shows five, and you do your own due diligence, call the five, and they say, no, never heard of these guys, they are not a responsive.
So we're going to put a requirement for a number of other projects that they?
Be specific, and then if they're the lowest bidder, if we don't feel they're qualified, we don't have to use them.
Well, it's not that you just don't feel qualified if they go.
They don't need the qualifications, is what I.
They may need to accept the lowest bid.
And they need the qualification.
Not just lowest bid, lowest responsive and responsible bidder, that also meets your RCO.
Well, it's going to be a matter of Carol Engineering and your folks to decide how to create that. It's a combination of experience and certification. So have you done this work before, and do you have the certification also to prove that, the training? And that can be sort of, that can be a certificate from the manufacturer, or some other recognized institutional, educational institution to verify that they have that kind of expertise to be able to do the job properly.
Do we know that's a thing?
Well.
I don't know that it's a thing.
To add, to add on to what John was saying, I don't remember the specific language that's in our ordinance, but typically with these, you issue a notice of intent to award, and then you have like a thirty-day period in which to do your due diligence and verify everything. And if they don't meet, if nothing comes back through the verifications and they don't meet those requirements, then the board makes a motion to reject that bid, and then you can award it to the next lowest, the next lowest bidder and do your due diligence process.
Right.
Now, if you find, if you find through the, I think we wrote this in the ordinance, if you find through the bidding process that you can't really find anybody who meets the requirements, then you can waive them, I believe.
Yeah, that thing's, you have to do a push, and then you can waive it.
That's a yes, that's correct. Now, there is a provision in there that allows you to, I believe that.
Yeah, in fact, two attempts to award a contractor's responsible bidder, no bidder determined to meet requirements attached, it may waive the provisions.
So then come back to the, if you go through this twice and it comes back to the board, then they can waive those provisions. But you would do, you have a due diligence process that we would use to vet anyone before a final award is issued.
Okay, that would make the.
And I would, since this would be our first project under this, or technically our second one under this, I would want kind of Kirsten to look at the bid specifications, particularly with the uniqueness of this kind of proposal.
The second one being, the first one being the EV charging station.
I feel that's, this is a little more, that one seems a little more straightforward, this one seems a little more unique with the design process involved in it, so we probably want more vetting done before this is actually put out to the public. That's just my thought.
So Chris and Kirsten, from what you've heard from this discussion, you comfortable with being able to pull together, I know you have to get the job, but if the scope of work, you feel you could define if you would be given a go-ahead, right? The scope of work, the requirements for it to be, to meet, to be able to meet, to be considered a qualified vendor for the project.
Yes, I think that we have.
And August fifteenth is a doable date to get the cost, to prepare that work.
So I'll meet, so I'll meet for me by August ninth.
Yes.
Chris?
Get it short, just a little bit.
Chris knows me, the Wednesday, end of the day, Wednesday before the meeting, he knows me. Okay, he's still fine now.
Is there any other topic, any other issues about this project that we've not covered? Either staff or anyone attending, Henry?
I'm listening to all these details concerning contracts, but dropping back, I think it's really important to realize what we're doing. We are setting the groundwork for the transition to electrification of the fleet, and we're starting the process of moving to renewable energy. And electricity and the gasoline-powered vehicles are seventy-five percent of the emissions of greenhouse gases from the entire.
Township.
Not including the sewer authority. And so that, that's really important. The other two sources are gas for the heating of the buildings and the heavy-duty vehicles that are going to require a great deal more effort to convert them onto renewable energy. But West Goshen Township is moving forward to make the transition, and I think we need to recognize that as we go through all the details that you are going through at this time, and I, the SAC commends you for this, for this work.
I give you your words of support, Henry, I appreciate it. Anything we have not covered tonight? Okay, but.
So Mr. Chairman, just to summarize, purchase the system outright, and we will bid the project out, and we are going to get price, we are going to get scope of work and proposals from Carol Engineering and HRG for a design, build, bid, and construction services for solar energy around building D, and we're going to target the August fifteenth meeting of the board to present this with board's consideration.
Sounds good.
Just a little last item, I'd really be curious to hear, I believe it was from East Pensbury Township?
I'm still going to try and reach out.
Because he had, they went with the PSA with SRE, and from what I understand, they had not yet made a determination of whether or not it was, for a cost benefit analysis, whether it was a good deal or not. So you're supposed to get that.
That was Seska Hannah Township.
Okay.
I can, I can follow up with, with the.
I'd really be curious to hear what this analysis came up with.
East Pens, East Pensbury, East Pensboro, I had, our schedules just didn't sync up. The gentleman I wanted to speak with was on vacation, he just got back yesterday, I haven't had a chance to speak with him. I did have a brief conversation with Mr. Brubolka after a meeting. He briefly, and I'll follow up with him again, he believes that owning it outright is the better route.
Well, I'm hearing from everybody.
And the gentleman, the gentleman from West Whitehaven Township was Mr. Williams, who presented at the Cato conference.
Okay, next on the agenda is item number eight, discussion and possible authorization to issue a request for proposal for the development of a park recreation, an open space plan for West Goshen Township. Chris?
Mr. Chairman, before the board, this evening is consideration to authorize the issuance of a request proposal for the development of a park recreation and open space plan. As the board's aware, the township was recently awarded a vision partnership program grant from Chester County for the development of this plan. The document is intended to serve as an amendment to the township's two thousand nineteen comprehensive plan, and will assist in guiding capital investment in township's park system. The draft RFP before the board was crafted to mirror the information contained within our grant application, and was reviewed by the Chester County Planning Commission, who founded in compliance with the grant requirements. In terms of timing, and I would need to update the sample project timeline, that's included in the RFP prior to issuance. The advertisement for the RFP, I would, if authorized by the board this evening, would be issued the week of July tenth, with responses due by August eighteenth. Deadline for questions to be submitted is Friday, August eleventh. Mr. Lear and I would complete the initial review of all submissions to ensure compliance with the requirements, and then I would recommend that the Park and Recreation Board vet the respondents and make recommendations to the board of supervisors for awarding the proposal. And I would target the second meeting in November for awarding the, the responses to the RFP, just as we go through the process.
Thanks, Chris.
And just included in the scope of work, we've outlined a task, we've outlined a task force who would kind of guide this process, consisting of members of the Park and Recreation Board, board supervisors, the SAC, and the Planning Commission, as well as myself, our park superintendent, and our park recreation director. And then there's also information regarding meetings and sort of what this would overall encompass.
Thanks. Boyd, have you had a chance to look at the RFP, and do you have any questions or comments about it?
Actually, I have, I think, one. Under three, preparing analysis, page five, I just thought that we should add in that the inventory of this existing park recreation in open space area shall include an assessment of the following existing conditions. I thought we should add something relative to flooding slash drainage concerns, and I specifically speak of the Parker Park. Should be added to that analysis there, because we can't recommend any structure.
The second from the bottom addresses grading and slopes and drainage issues.
Okay, okay.
Chris, I think maybe in this section too, I mean, I'm looking at the overall timeline for the work to be completed, it's, it's possible that we may have authorized a substantial park improvement project at Community Park. So I think under preparing the analysis, we should have a bullet in here about understanding and incorporation of a, of a plan, West Goshen Township Community Park Improvement Project, specifically meaning the splash pad, additional bathroom. That's what we're calling it, the whole bundle of projects that we're currently waiting to see if we get grant funding for.
Okay, I can add that to.
I don't know if that's the right spot for it, or it needs to be somewhere else than that.
Well, that's based, but that's for inventory of existing, maybe I can add a bullet for plans currently in the works.
Yeah, yeah.
Plans currently discussed and in the works by the township.
Do you think that that would change, I guess, the, like, people that are responding, or like, how do you think that would affect, I'm just curious?
I don't think it would affect it too dramatically, I can foresee it.
The only thing I would say is timing, just because that's people's vacations, to then have to wrap their head around what you have proposed, that's just another thing to take time to read and delve into.
Well, it's just one bullet, I mean, the work itself will be done once they've got the contract. So really, if you respond to the RFP, just reading, yeah, you've got to understand what projects are in play.
But they may not know what the cost to do that is. They're going to do their own due diligence, so with half, is that going to take me an hour to read, is that going to take me day three? And then they might incorporate into the cost, that's all I was thinking.
Well, there's a lot of it, there's a lot of stuff here, if you really need to delve that deeply, Chris, you're going to spend a lot of time like drainage, I mean, that is a big open question right there, what does that mean?
What is, what is, what's helpful is, we've already been, as part of our grant application for the county that's been awarded for a community park, and as well as the application that can be submitted to the state.
It's all documentation.
We had the doc, there's a lot of information, we also had to document all of the public discussion, so we have all the minutes from where those meetings were, from where those projects were discussed, included in our application, so if anyone does ask us questions, we have the minutes readily available where we can send those. So those are part of both of those applications that we already have on file.
Yeah.
And we can also, the grant applications are called a record, so we can send copies of the grant application as well.
The one other thing I think we need to incorporate in here, we discussed it earlier, is really we need something that says that analysis will include consideration and accommodation of this treaty plan.
Where we can, we'll.
I don't know where you put it, but it should be in here.
It's not really this place of. It's not really the first of them.
What I think we can include, what I think we can include in there is under the next bullet related to opportunities, I can add a fourth, I can add a fourth one, or I can expand upon, there's a provision, number three, we talked about natural feature corridors such as streams, floodplains, and habitat corridors as being included in, as part of the plan for opportunities for our park system. We could probably add the tree plan either as a separate bullet or as part of that discussion regarding natural resources.
Well, I'm pleased when I look at it, it seems to be about adding more space parks or something. Whereas the tree plan is something that exists and we've just approved, it should be included in how you recommend the implementation of it within the overall current parks. So I think it should, it should not be under opportunities, but it should be there somewhere. Maybe under the needs assessment or kind of.
Well, under section, well, page five, three, preparing analysis. The consultants shall prepare an analysis of the existing parks and also future parks, such as including Greystone. It says including potential land, it could be quite, make it specify Greystone Park, and we're going to hit that soon.
That's the third one now, so you've got two, you've got the understanding of the project for community park, incorporating the tree plan, and the addition of Greystone. I think Chris knows what we're trying to do, so if you figure out what, you'll figure out in a minute. As long as he's sitting.
I can put that into. I can probably put the, we can incorporate Greystone, I think, kind of also on that future, those existing plans that are in the pipeline, because we know that Greystone is going to be dedicated in the near future. And I can call, I can say including, you know, plans for parks, including plans for West Goshen Community Park and park, future dedicated park to Greystone, as it relates to the tree plan. That, I'm wondering if that would fit best under the community needs assessment. Since that's, that's a need, that's a need there, we can add it to.
Put it as a bullet in there.
Yeah, add it as a separate bullet under, under recre, separate bullet below like recreation program.
Are there other comments on the RFP document from the board?
Ken helped me put this together, so thanks.
It's very comprehensive, so. Well done. The proposed budget is outlined in the RFP, clearly that's.
That was, that was recommended to us by the county.
Yeah, so is it intended to be a not to exceed, people to respond to that? Or can they say, oh, I know you only proposed ninety, but it's going to take a hundred?
What Bill DeGoffrey recommended, it is kind of like to give them a gauge of what we can add in terms of our plans. Yeah, because he's, I think, Ken, correct me if I'm wrong, I think he said in his comments that we don't give them really a guide, we could end up with stuff all over the place.
Yeah, that's good. Because it allows us to determine how many man hours of effort we can put into this work.
And we would, we would advertise this publicly and anyone could submit a response. But kind of like what we did with the pension RFP, I would also send it to specific firms that we've worked with in the past, just to get a response from them as well.
Any other comments or questions?
Would we have to pass a motion here to accept the RFP with the recommended edits?
Authorize issuance.
Don't make that motion.
Just a second. Okay, so a motion and a second to authorize the RFP with the edits that we discussed, is there any public comment on this? Okay, ready to take a vote? All in favor, say aye. Aye, is there any opposition? Motion passes five zero. Okay, I'm excited about this. Just look at our response, because it's a great document, it'd be interesting to see what responses we get.
And I will also, since they have, since they do have planning divisions, I will be sending it to Carol Engineering and HRG as well.
I mean, just to be realistic, the timeline, it shows that it's really through the end of next year before we've got a fully baked plan approved and something we could, is there any way we could get, it looks like we will have a little bit of an understanding of where we're headed in the budgeting process next year. So if there's something we want to include in the budget, we would have at least an idea as to what we should preliminary budget for.
That's correct. And we're also under a timeline with our, I modeled the timeline in the RFP. That was actually part of our grant application to mirror the requirements for completion under the vision partnership program.
Okay, is there a specific drop date for that? Like, does it have to be done by the end of next year?
I believe it's eighteen months.
Yeah, they give extensions very easily.
Correct, they do give.
As long as they're, you're working at, you do look at it.
They give, they give extensions. And I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, it's eighteen months from when the contract is executed. And because we have, we have selected a contract and we don't have a full scope of work yet, we haven't executed a contract yet.
Did you say that you're planning to select a contract in November?
That we might, to present a recommendation to the board for approval at the second meeting in November.
So on the timeline, when it says that's a community-wide survey in November, is that going out before we've left?
No, I'm going to have to adjust this timeline. I kind of knew after I put this together, and Ken and I kind of talked about some of the timing things, that we were going to have to adjust that sample timeline. And the one thing that the county recommended to us when we talked, and was let the consultant kind of set the timeline, but it would be good to include a sample so that they get an idea of what they're working with.
Sounds good. Thanks. Okay, next on the agenda is number nine, continued discussion and possible approval of a proposal for the preparation of a subdivision plan for three-one-five Powell Lane. Chris?
Mr. Chairman, before the board, this evening is continued discussion regarding preparation of subdivision plan for three-fifteen Powell Lane. This was, this is related to the existing footpath that connects Powell Lane to Cooper Smith Park. And the purpose of the subdivision plan would be to create an independent parcel that would be maintained by the township for this footpath. We have spoken with the property owner who is amenable to this proposal. This was previously discussed by the board at the June twentieth meeting, where our proposal for Carol Engineering Corporation was reviewed. The board requested a competing proposal as part of the evaluation process, and we contacted HRG to provide a second proposal for the board's consideration. And that has been presented to the board this evening. And the price of the proposal, I believe, was, let me just verify that, I believe, was seventy-nine hundred dollars, which does not include the installation of certain monuments, and those would be an additional two-hundred-and-fifty dollars per monument if those were to be installed.
When you say independent parcel, you actually mean one that would be merged with Cooper Smith Park?
Yes.
Single lots?
Yes, a separate, a separate parcel from the private property owner.
What's a monument?
So when you do, when you do a property survey, there are monuments, they're usually put at the corners to identify the property boundary. They have like small concrete, small concrete markers.
And they stay there?
They're in the permanent line. You might, sometimes there are pins, property pins at the corners of the property. But these would be concrete monuments that are put in the ground.
Reviewing the scope of services between HRT and Carol. It looks like they're the same, but in your review, are the scopes of work the same in your estimation?
Basically, I had Brian take a look at these before he went on vacation, and he thought they looked comparable. I sent, I sent HRG the information we were looking for, and they responded accordingly.
Do you know what the price of Carol was?
We did not send them a copy of the Carol Engineering proposal.
Except that the monuments are included in Carol's, right?
There were two monuments included in Carol's, and then additional monuments, I believe, were two-hundred dollars apiece.
How many monuments does Brian want? Would you want four?
I would have four at minimum.
Now, maybe this is somewhat rhetorical question. Most scope for services, are they sufficient in order to be able to get this thing through the whole SADO process? Successful?
I think this is, I think so, I think this is a relatively small process. We're talking about a two thousand, roughly two thousand square foot piece of ground, give or take. If we merge it with Cooper Smith Park, that would avoid having to go to the zoning area work. Because remember, one of the concerns that Chris presented was creating a non-conforming plot. If we merge it with the existing parcel, then we wouldn't have to go through the zoning area work process.
Can you, can you just remind me where we are with conversations with the property owner with regard to the appraised value and other potential requirements that might impact the total cost of this overall effort?
The last conversation I had with the property owner was he didn't really have too much of a concern with the value that came up. The bigger concern was ensuring privacy and impact on his property. Like, he discussed having a fence installed to define the property boundary. Because one of the concerns is when things are, when, say, it snows or it rains, individuals walking around with a footpath that isn't going down private property. So he has discussed with us the possibility of putting up a fence, and then he would continue that fence to kind of block it off, so to speak.
But we would put the fence up, or he would?
He's asked for consideration for the township to install some kind of fencing.
But we've not responded formally to that.
I have not responded formally. I did tell, I know that that's been part of our discussions to define the boundary, and I did tell him that's been part of the discussion, but I haven't told him definitively that we're going to go ahead and do that.
So would he pay the valuable land?
He hasn't indicated that. So I think we could have some, we could have a discussion with him about installing a fence versus paying for it, paying for the valuable land, but I have not had that conversation with him yet.
That could be, that's independent of potential decision making tonight?
Correct. I think that's an independent negotiation with the property owner. I have had conversations with, I had a conversation with the property owner after the last board meeting. He asked just for like a status update on where it's, but I told him we're still working through the proposal process.
But I would recommend that you don't authorize it to start the work until you have a signed agreement in hand with the property owner, because you're wasting your money if you don't have a signed agreement.
So it looks like including the monuments, the difference is thirty-two fifty. If you include monuments on both parts. That'd be twelve-one-five-oh for Carol and eighty-nine hundred for HRT.
So we don't need to approve this tonight, because to Chris's point, we really would like to get all agreeable property owner before we execute this, take it forward with either HRT or CAP.
You could, you could select someone to do it contingent on an agreement with the property owner, and then I wouldn't, I wouldn't sign or return the authorization until we have that agreement.
That's a good way forward. Okay, Boyd, so which proposal do you want to approve contingent upon an agreement with the property owner?
Tina, what did you just say, those numbers? Basically, if you add the monuments, because Carol included two monuments, so I added four hundred dollars, just two hundred each onto that. And HRT did not include the monuments, and they were two hundred dollars each, so that would be a traditional thousand on top of the paper basis. So, I'm sorry, two fifty, yeah, times four. So basically, it would be twelve thousand one hundred and fifty with Carol compared to HRT, which is eighty-nine hundred. Makes a difference of thirty-two fifty between the two.
Okay, well, we have a motion then to approve HRT for the work.
Yeah, I'll make it.
Thank you. Just a second.
Yes, I'll second that.
Okay, so we have board motion to approve HRT to do the necessary survey work and monument marking contingent upon an agreement with the property owner to proceed. Any board comments or questions on the motion? Any public comment or questions? Okay, ready to take a vote, all in favor, say aye. Aye, is there any opposition? Motion passes five zero. Okay, item number ten, discussion and possible awarding of bids for the following surplus equipment, vehicles with township. Two thousand and nine Caterpillar skid steer loader and a two thousand sixteen Ford Interceptor, sit down. Chris?
Mr. Chairman, before the board, this evening is consideration to award the bids for two items that are owned by West Goshen Township, which are the two thousand nine Caterpillar skid steer loader and two thousand sixteen Ford Interceptor. The bids were advertised on, the products were advertised, we bid on municipal bid from June eighth, twenty twenty-three to June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three, with public inspection held on June twentieth and June twenty-seventh. I would like to note, since we started doing municipal bid, we haven't gotten anyone to participate in the public inspection process. Really, we had one person at one time.
No, we had a lot of interest in the tanker.
On the tanker?
Previous vehicles, the last few, not many.
So the results, the results for the vehicles were as follows. For the two thousand nine Caterpillar skid steer loader, the winning bidder was Justin O'Connor in a bid amount of forty thousand one hundred dollars, and we received a hundred and fifty-seven bids. It was, it was interest, I'm going to have him aside, it was interesting to watch the end of the skid steer loader bid.
Yeah, I mean, that was a hundred and fifty-seven bids, that's not a hundred and fifty-seven individual bidders, that was.
Yeah, it was. Because what municipal bid does to avoid bid sniping is if you bid within, if it closes at noon, if you place a bid at eleven fifty-nine, it extends it by two minutes. And then if people bid within those two minutes, they keep extending it. I think it went on for about ten minutes beyond the.
I think it was more than that.
It might have been ten or fifteen minutes that it kind of kept going on. And Dave and I kept watching it kind of go up and up and up. And I gave emails every time a bid is, every time a bid is submitted. So for about fifteen minutes, I was just, my phone was going off with bids. It went from, it went from twenty-six thousand to forty thousand dollars in about fifteen or twenty minutes. It went up pretty rapidly. So we received a hundred and fifty-seven, as Dave noted, it's not all individual bidders, but we received a hundred and fifty-seven bids on that item, so it was forty thousand one hundred dollars. The Ford Interceptor sedan only received three bids. The winning bidder was a gentleman named Michael McGlynn with a bid amount of three thousand two hundred dollars. The winning bid for the skid steer is three thousand one hundred dollars more than the trade-in value that was, than the trade-in that was offered at the time the new skid steer loader was purchased. The winning bid for the Ford Interceptor is less than half of the winning bid that was received when the vehicle was bid out previously. This may be attributable, I'm attributing this to the water pump issue and the lack of a valid inspection on the vehicle.
Is this the vehicle that one weather picked up?
Correct. And then the second highest bidder just didn't have, I contacted the second highest bidder, and they didn't have the, they didn't have the available funds to purchase it.
And they didn't rebid.
And they did not rebid. This, this vehicle got little to no activity or traction.
The winning bid on the Caterpillar skid steer loader, is that, is he representing a company, or is this, we don't know.
No, no, no. It just did, it actually, you can't real, when you look in the bid history, you can't really see the name of the bidder. You only get that when there's a winner in there, you get a user for it.
Is there a requirement that they have to book the lines at a certain time? I think out of the.
Ten days.
Okay, so is that, I think, out of the municipal.
They have ten days in which to make payment and pick up the vehicle.
This vehicle was not a visit with you respected by anyone before.
And it wasn't the last time, the winning bidder, the last time, ever.
Oh, wait, no, I think, I think Mr. Walsh was talking about the skid steer.
Oh, yeah, nobody, nobody capable of it either.
So the last time the Interceptor went, it was like, what, sixty-nine hundred dollars for the bid?
Seven thousand, seven thousand.
The second time it went after the bid, it went, now it's thirty-two hundred dollars, so.
And I started, I started the Interceptor at the exact same amount this time as I started it last time. I did not, I did not lower it based on the bid results.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the board? Okay, I will make the motion to award the bids for the two thousand nine Caterpillar skid steer loader to Mr. O'Connor, forty thousand one hundred, and for the two thousand sixteen Ford Interceptor sedan, to Mr. McGlynn, for three thousand two hundred dollars. Just a second. Thank you. Any comments? Any problem? Okay, ready to take a vote, all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposition? Okay, the motion passes five zero. Thanks, Chris.
You're welcome.
Next on the agenda is item number eleven, discussion regarding the sale of the current Inspire One drone that is owned by the township. Chris?
Mr. Chairman, before the board, this evening is discussion and consideration to sell the existing Inspire One drone, currently owned by West Goshen Township. In the two thousand twenty-three budget, the township allocated funds to purchase a new drone for the engineering department. We also did discuss at the last meeting adding the addition of the thermal camera to support the police department. The new drone has been received and is in the township's possession. An offer to purchase the existing drone was received from the West Brandywine Township Police Department in the amount of a thousand dollars. I provided a letter from their chief of police, Jeff Kimes. And reviewing similar used drones for sale. Um, in reviewing similar used drones for sale, Brian and I both researched, both researched comparable models, and the price range that we found for similar models that sold were between four hundred and seventy-nine dollars and one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars with an average price of nine hundred and seventy dollars and sixty cents. We did, I will note that we did only find one comparable model at that seventeen fifty price, which we believe would be an outlier. Most were in the lower end range.
Were you saying these bids were municipal bid, or they were other?
They were other sources. There were actually none on municipal bid.
Okay.
Uh, pursuant to the second class township code, there are two options that the board could consider. We could advertise it for a public bid through the municipal bid process, or the board could accept the offer from West Brandywine Township. And pursuant to the second class township code, a piece of equipment may be sold to another municipality without the bidding process.
Thanks. So I just want to know, we did, the board did receive an email from Ms. Margie Swod, um, expressing her opinion that for this drone, she believes it should be bid through municipal bid and not, um, go the direction of, um, providing it to West Brandywine Township Police. She believes, I think, that the, the value is towards the upper end of the range, we should therefore try to maximize the value, that was her opinion. Any, what are the board's thoughts and questions on this?
So if we just, we were to put it on municipal bid and something being, you know, voted and they came back lower than the low down, would we have to accept it if you put it down?
No, you could, you could reject it. The only thing is you're going to incur the cost of advertising, because I.
Which, what?
Two hundred, two, two hundred and fifty dollars to do a public notice and daily logo.
Does it cost anything to do it on municipal?
No, it doesn't cost anything to do it on municipal, that I do have. It doesn't cost anything to do it on municipal bid for municipalities. The only cost would be to put it on, to run the necessary legal advertisement, which would be, probably about two to two hundred and fifty dollars.
So you might be bidding on municipal, we have to run a legal.
That's correct. That's correct, and then I include the, I include the link in the, in the.
So you didn't see any drones of any kind, I mean, is it about this model?
I searched drone, I then also went into computers and IT and filtered down within IT and didn't find anything in there.
I read like on a crisis or something, you're, you're seeing.
We looked on like, we looked, I believe we looked on eBay, there was also like a specific drone website that we looked on for comparable ones, and that's where we came up with these pricing.
Unless Brandywine Police Department does not have a drone.
That's correct.
You contacted the police chief about them?
I contacted, I contacted the department.
And is it, did the drone work, babe?
It works, the software is obsolete and not updated, so it doesn't really meet the needs. The reason why it doesn't meet our needs is because you can't fly near an airport because of the software deficiencies, it can't be updated. You know, we talked about that when we.
Since there's no other drones on municipal bid, do you think that putting a drone on municipal bid, if there are other municipalities looking for drones, would draw a lot of interest, worth the two hundred and fifty dollar legal advertisement?
I don't think you will get more, I, I do not believe that it is worth as much as some people think it is worth, because technology, this is an old product. We do have seven batteries, but the batteries don't have significant flight time. The software isn't supported and is not obsolete. I also, looking at the way technology changes so rapidly, the value of electronic or technology diminishes so much more than any other product. I mean, if you look at, say, you trade in like yourself in your computer, then you could purchase a twelve hundred dollar MacBook and then trade it in a year later and get four hundred dollars for it. So the value of any sort of electronic degrades relatively quickly.
Well, we have nothing to lose from municipal bid.
Two hundred and fifty dollars.
Two hundred and fifty dollars, but if you, if you're going to offer it to this township, you, you really should offer it to any other township that wants it, and now you have an administrative.
Was that necessary? They reached out, they reached out to us, or that you?
They reached out to us. They.
I didn't know it was available.
Rick asked, Rick asked, Rick asked.
Oh, Rick, Rick, did money bro.
No, it works for West Brandywine. Okay, well, Rick asked me, and I told him, if you're interested, have, have the township look together and all.
Yeah, right. Okay. Well, um, you know, if you guys are saying you've looked around and comparable models that are going for, you said the seventeen fifty was an outlier.
I, when I found that, I asked Brian if he would consider that an outlier based on the research he did, and he, he and I both agreed that that would be an outlier.
Well, what you could do is put it on municipal bid, and if you don't get anything or equal to that, then it looks like you charged this township one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
You're going to be a loss for your township. These are your children.
I don't think, I don't think that's the, I don't think that's the intent of, I don't think that's the intent of the second.
And really, it's a loss.
I, I.
It doesn't sound like it's worth it.
Well, I'm just thinking of, you know, the time that you guys need to spend to do this, based on all the other priorities we have, like, that I think you're spending time on, put it up here, that's certainly in the right ballpark, and I don't think it's worth it. So I, that would be, my personal position is to, to sell it to West Brandywine Township for a thousand dollars.
I would agree with that. I mean, this is, we're talking about a few dollars here, really. I mean, if really was a principle here about being transparent, that would be fine, but I just don't see it. I mean, we're very transparent, we're selling it to a neighboring community.
Absolutely. That's a second class code, they want you to, they're encouraging that by not returning the bid.
You did this around this time last year with the used police department speed trail in West Chesterboro.
Okay, well, any other comments from the board? Any public comments on the discussion? Okay, well, I will make the motion to sell the, uh, what's it called, drone one, Inspire One drone to West Brandywine Township Police Department for the amount of one thousand dollars. Just a second. Thank you, John. Any final comments or questions from anyone? Okay, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposition? Okay, motion passes five zero. Final agenda item is number twelve, approval of the bills to be paid to the general fund, the sewer revenue fund, the waste recycling fund, and the capital reserve fund. Any questions from the board about the bills to be paid?
I just have two questions. Um, Dave, for the MagnaTea, five thousand two oh five, is that per quarter per month? You know how much we spend on that?
No, not at the moment.
No, I was just wondering what the.
No, actually, we run the budget for it, that's right.
Yeah, I think.
I know it's hot.
People, well, we're paying, it's, it's all transport fees. It's not, the product cost is really low with the transport.
Yeah, okay.
And since you're here, um, I think I remember asking at another, at a person meeting about the bands, did you say that we get sponsors to?
We do have sponsors for the band, they don't cover one hundred percent of the band, but it does offset, it does pay.
Okay.
And I just have one last question. What do we use blood testing kits for, except for DUIs?
Yes, they are.
Are they?
Is that in the police, is that in the.
I don't know.
Yes, so four-ten, that's for the police department.
Okay.
So those are for the police.
Okay, I thought that, I just wanted to confirm.
I have a question.
Uh, do we, um, have drug testing for employees?
We have, we have drug testing for our CDL employees. Uh, that's done quarterly and randomly, we drug alcohol testing. That's fair, I'll say.
Any other questions on the bills to be paid?
No more questions.
Okay, I will make the motion to approve the bills we paid for the funds as described. Just a second.
I'll second.
Thanks, Tina. Is there any public comments? All ready to take a vote? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposition? Motion passes five zero. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting at seven fifty-eight? Okay, I will second the motion. All in favor, adjourn, say aye. Aye. Meeting is adjourned, thank you.
No, forget, next Wednesday, three P M, news, all.
So, Chris, do you, do you run those proceedings without trans, if you remember?
Yeah, yeah, just turn it over to me, I would announce the procedure.
Seven fifty-eight. West Town Township, is that still involved at all?
I don't know, I think John will.
Does your hand hurt? Were you really thinking?
When's the last time you saw one of them empty?
Everybody.
Stay warm.